One property is.
I got some things.
It was storage.
Yeah, I'm taking down another.
Like you get Lawrence to take his seat and we'll start.
Sorry, sir.
Morning, I'd like to call the order of the study session for the customer's sanitary district for Tuesday, April fourteenth, probably the most momentous day in my life.
Yeah.
I'm wedding anniversary today.
Yay, mine too.
Is yours today too?
Today, yeah.
But I have a few years on here.
Eight years.
Forty-two.
Congratulations.
I'm not even that old.
Forty-one years old.
Director James Ferriman.
President.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Oden.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comments, we do have a public comment card for Mr. Mosher on item three, sir?
Yeah, thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board. The non-agenda item I wanted to speak to about was the city's, not the city's, the district's website, which as you may or may not know, is currently not accessible to the public, the public trying to see it just to supply the screen. In an increasingly internet-connected world, there's two issues connected with this. One is somebody waking up this morning wanting to know if the board was meeting, is supposed to have access to the agenda for the meeting over the internet. That had been a suggestion for many years, it's actually been a legal requirement in the Brown Act since January two thousand and twelve. However, the actual language says that the agenda has to be available on the city's website if the city has a website, and at the moment, the district or agency doesn't seem to have a website because it's not working. I'm aware that the Attorney General is currently working on an opinion as to what absences of agendas on the website are excusable. That opinion has not been issued yet, and in view of the small public attendance you have during the practicality of the situation, I think the current situation is ambiguous enough, we would go ahead with the meeting, but it is something that the board should be aware of. The other issue though is, in an increasingly internet-dependent world, your rate payers are dependent on the website as the portal to the district's services, and if they had a problem, they may not even have a paper phone book or know how to contact you, they would think they should look on their smartphone and find the website. If it's not working, it's really a problem. So the thought that occurred to me this morning, we at previous meetings heard about the importance of having warning systems at pump stations that inform the district when a pump has failed. I can think of situations over a weekend when the district website is not working, and the people in charge of the IT are not aware that it's not working because they're not trying to access it. So I'm wondering if like those pump alarm systems, there might be some third party that can monitor websites and inform the district in a timely fashion when the public can't access the website. This is not on your agenda, so you can't discuss it, but I think it would be good, you are allowed without discussion to clarify things, I think it would be helpful if the board could be clarified what the problem was today, why the website is not working.
I came after that.
Same.
I was aware of the district's website being down, I've taken that into account. We are going to, we're working on it, it's a juvenile error, we've had issues with our website hosting, and we were being proactive by transitioning from a different website host to a better one, which is, the security is much more updated, and we won't have this problem in the future. So we are working on it, it is down, it was just down for this morning, and I think he has a great idea, I think we should notify our residents through the government outreach if we can get them an alternative website, which we do have through those agenda, to post the agenda and have it accessible.
The one question I have, and maybe you can get clarification from Alan on the Brown Act, if, if, if for some reason we have technological issues or we have interruptions like this, Mr. Mosher brings a point up about we shouldn't have the meeting.
Lawrence is posted outside, we're legally filed, we're legally compliant, no, it is posted outside.
Okay, that's all.
How long is it gonna be down, or do you know?
Not for long, it's just a web hosting, she's working on it right now.
Can I ask a question? At our board meeting this month, do we have an update of where we're at with the new posting?
Oh, of course, it's gonna be resolved today.
Okay, I mean, so we can get put on the agenda for an update?
Of course, yeah.
First time I comment.
One more, just let him, Bob's first.
Jim, I can go, but is, does this affect our pump station alarm system?
No. This is completely.
It's just a website.
Mr. Mosher, go ahead.
I should have clarified, public access was not available last night also, so it failed sometime last night, so it's been off the air for many hours. And the reason I was making other suggestions, I perhaps did not make clearly, a month ago in Newport Beach, they had a problem with their website, and the city people were not aware that there was a problem with the site, although the public was, and had no way to contact them because it was broken. So that's why I'm suggesting that there, somewhere in the world, there must be a third party like the pump alarms that would notify Scott or someone when there's a problem, because the public is not gonna know how to notify them when the website is not working.
I'll be very honest, I noticed that it was down, I tried to do some stuff last night, and I attributed it to my own system, so then I didn't bother, I could have, I could have called Scott and said, hey, we got an issue, but, so I, I noticed it last night as well.
So in that case, we can get our contractor who helps me maintain the website to just
periodically check it, and then notify me that everything's in working order, but I do know that because we're transitioning from a new web host, that these problems are going to occur, but it's, we're being proactive so that this doesn't happen anymore, and so hopefully we'll have a smoother transition with the new web host. Thank you very much, Mr. Moser.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we'll move into items of study, and item number one, recycling and waste conversion report.
Thank you, Mr. President, Javier Chiguiel's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, just standard our report, if there's any questions, I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Our historical tonnage analysis, I don't remember seeing that. Is that a new title?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Last month during our study session meeting, a director asked to, to look at why, look at some of the reasons why our tonnages were projected to go up. So what staff did, we went, looked at, we went back to nineteen ninety-nine, nineteen ninety year to current, and we looked at some of the trends that were happening, and we did notice a fifty percent increase since then. And if you use the nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety as a baseline, in fiscal year oh five, oh six, and oh six, oh seven, the tonnage increased by twenty-five percent. But if you compare last year's to current projections, we're only anticipated to increase about three percent. And we indicated some reasons why the increases may be happening. Some may be attributed to more developments in Costa Mesa, more single-family and more multifamily dwellings are being built. Population increased slightly, about four thousand people. In the year two thousand, there was a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred residents. Currently, there's approximately a hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred residents. And in working and speaking with CRNR, we also agree that we believe that economic downturn has increased the number of persons per household, as it indicated fuller trash cans, more vehicles on the streets. We figure that, that's another indicator of why some of the tonnages are increasing. Since, staff believes that there's gonna be more as the economy recovers and more residential homes continue to develop, especially high-density developments, we believe that tonnage are gonna continue to increase slowly, but we don't think they're gonna get past the peak of the oh five, oh six, oh six, oh seven numbers in quite some time. It's gonna take us maybe five years to get back to, to those numbers. So, there's any questions, I'd be more happy to answer.
What I suggest as a goal is that you never get back to those numbers. That staff figure out, you know, ways for the public to increase their recycling and whatnot. I would not like to see in staff's mind that it's okay to get back to those numbers, you know, without concerted effort, you know, to teach people how to recycle or whatever. You know, so I'll keep trying to make that as a goal sometime in the future.
Comment and question?
Sure.
The comment is, I really believe it's remodeling, that there are so many people economy-wise, that they're staying where they're at, but they need to remodel it, and that involves trash, you know, let's face it. So we've had that for a long time, and we got it back again. Question is, is the city still working with us as far as when they approve something or before they approve it, that we are saying whether it can hold this amount of whatever? You know, in other words, for the toilets, for the, you know, everything?
We definitely do that for sewer, with regard to trash, I'll answer that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, ma'am, we, we go, we attend monthly meetings with the city, we review the current plans, proposed plans, they allow us to comment, any complicated plans we do forward to CRNR, for them to get confirmation, and we are, we are looking at the current plans. There's some older plans that, that we didn't get a chance to comment on, that are posing some challenges, but we're working with those developers.
Finding commission, get a couple of big ones last night, they approved a couple of big ones last night, so, one, one multi-story which is gonna affect us, the one on Victoria, I think, those are single families, aren't they?
Well, we're attached.
Are they attached? So that's one that's gonna come down the pipe, but you may have already been aware of it.
Yes.
What happens when it's a state-owned facility? Like whether it be UCC, or whether it be, say, Fairview, say, do we still get to say something else?
On the sewer side, absolutely. On the trash side, we're more along the lines of single-family rez and small multi. Javier, when we got to forty-four thousand tons, maybe it's worth asking Lawrence, were there any operational difficulties at all? I don't recall anything happening that we had so much trash, we, we had a problem, that never occurred.
I know one thing that we've had a problem with is Fairview State Hospital, as far as underground.
Right.
And we've kinda sat on it for years and years and years, and nothing's happening now.
Right.
Because we might watch it closely, because if they do move, you know, and something's gonna go in there, boy, right there, we've got a problem underground.
Right, we, they're on notice, we had their developer in the room.
Okay.
And we have put them on notice in writing, so, but very good point.
I was at the groundwater replenishment meeting last night, and there were representatives from different cities, and they're experiencing the same thing. Like Fullerton, for instance, you know, a car dealership was knocked down, and they built three hundred high-rise, or not high-rise, but, you know, three-story units, and there's a bunch of that going on in La Habra, I mean, all throughout the county.
Go down Beach Boulevard, honey, from Beach. It's becoming Manhattan almost.
I know.
It's a good day in the winter, and what you can.
Yeah, and so it's, it's not just unique to Costa Mesa, I mean, it's really a county.
Really big ones, affect our spending, so those will take a, a commercial investment.
Just put a, I have a question for Javier.
Yes, sir.
When you meet with the city, do you guys ever find out the stats from the city tonnage, are they increasing the same volume that ours are, or, that would be a question you could ask.
That's a good question, they typically don't share that information, but we can definitely look into it and get that, it should be public information.
Do they monitor the commercial tonnages? I mean, I think they have to. Well, they probably have to, but do they?
No, they, they have to make a report.
I see a head shaking in the back of the room from CRNR, so, thanks, Rob, do you have a comment?
Yeah.
Which is what they're intention.
Yes, yes, I am.
Well, they, they're obligated to report this time.
We have to, we have to report.
Including all that.
Yeah.
We concluded back in oh four, oh five, that Director Schaefer's statement about remodel was particularly accurate, and even though remodeling, construction materials are not allowed in the containers, it, it makes for a good time for education to elect, to make sure that the property owners know that, that they're not to be putting the construction debris in the containers.
I actually, we just remodeled our kitchen, our contractor was putting stuff in the container and keeping all the cardboard, you know, the cabinets, well, the cardboard makes him money, and I told him, I says, that stuff's not going to my trash can, that's all I need, and I made him take it out and take it with him, but I think you're absolutely right, I think contractors are putting everything they can in those stuffs, or in the container. Okay, good report, Javier, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to code enforcement, Mr. Roberts, or do I go to Mr. Carroll first?
That's fine. For meeting.
It's early, Ed, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. For this month, for the March, correction, for the month of March two thousand and fifteen, there were seven separate proactive scavenging investigations that I conducted. Wanted to bring something of note to the board, in my narratives, I'll stipulate if the investigation was a consensual encounter or if it was a detention, and I know that's a scary term for people outside of my industry. I have to identify what I have when I'm actually contacting an individual out there, that's why I'll put a lot of detail into my report. Conscensional encounters essentially where I suspect, but I have no evidence to solidify or substantiate a, you know, initiative of scavenging. At that point, I'll just approach the person, they are free to leave at any point, they can tell me to pound sand, and there's not a darn thing I could do to them, so, a lot of these are that, you know, I'll sit there on a residential street, I'll watch it for a while, and I won't see any instance of scavenging, however, you know, I see the person walking with what I suspect to be recyclable material, that kind of thing. The other instance is clearly what's been constituted as detention, that's where I see somebody rummaging through trash can, trash cart, removing CMSU recyclable material, and at that point, I'm gonna contact them with either the intent to counsel or to issue a citation. At that point, I, my direction and the way I am as a person, I'm not gonna let the situation escalate into a conflict, I'll let it go regardless, but, I just wanted to say there's been a proliferation of these scavenging instances concentrated on the west side, east side is quieter down, I don't see a whole lot, I normally travel my major corridors like Santa Ana, Orange, Alvin, those things, don't see too many, it all seems to be pretty much over here on the west side, Lions Park, right around here by headquarters. In other item notes, getting off the scouting, going to trash container enforcement, almost doubled the numbers, we're at forty-three instances of, that I collectively detected, and this is just storage carts left out in public view. So I, for this month, I think my effort is gonna be more concentrated on the storage of carts out in public view, I think I need to go out there and knock on some more doors on my violators and let them know why we're doing what we're doing. Does anyone have any questions?
You know, maybe a comment on the scavenging report, what I find, even with some of my neighbors, I think the hardest thing is, the residents don't really care, they don't care as much as we do about people taking stuff out of the cart, because there's this sympathy factor, now those poor people must need that stuff.
Yeah.
It's almost an educate, we're gonna have to re-educate it in something, somewhere now, especially as we move more into the organic stuff, residents need to know that they shouldn't be letting that happen, but, I have a neighbor, and I've told her a thousand times, on, our trash gets picked up on Thursday, on Wednesday night, she puts all of her newspapers right on the curb, and there's a guy that comes, and I've talked to the guy, I said, you know what you're doing is not legal, and he sort of begs off, you know, but, there's this education I think we're gonna have to go through with the public about, hey, don't do that.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Another thing, sir, my first assignment in the detective bureau was identity theft, that's what I did for a long time. That, right there, I think you nailed it, it, perhaps in the future when we do our suggestions or a public outreach, we could bring the police department on board, maybe just throw in a little blurb about how, just have the residents, you know, employ a little bit of caution with what they're discarding into the trash cart space, certainly they're going through the recyclable material, but I don't think the folks there in the general are gonna discriminate, they're gonna go into the other trash cart as well.
Yeah.
And if there's credit card bill statements, you know, you can start piecing, you know, portion of someone's identity, or at least if it enables identity theft, so.
Yeah, I think that's a really good suggestion.
Well, if we transition into organics cart, you know, the recyclables will be even more easily accessible. One, one thing that we are, one thing I'd like to have discussed at the future meeting as far as carts is, we were doing pilot programs in, on trash carts in alleys, and so, I don't know, I'd like to have an update on where that program is, but I haven't heard anything from staff for a while. So maybe, that'd be a future item, maybe, make it put on the agenda, just to see what if anything, or what staff recommends based on what they found, or where the program is, maybe they're active and, I don't know.
Maybe that's right, great, thanks, sir.
Good report.
Thank you.
Item four is the organics ad hoc committee, we had our meeting on April, April something, last week.
Second Thursday, Thursday.
It's maybe some Thursday, a calendar.
Okay.
We talked about the, CRNR gave us an update, and the AD construction status is the first item on the agenda, they, they say they will be running as a nine-one this year, nine-one of fifteen. Talked about their carts, the cart rollout, it's on schedule for June, you know, with the items going to a compost facility in Victorville. On the organic bucket, these are the household buckets, we're looking at next month for distribution, and we did talk about some storage issues and where we're gonna keep them, and Scott's volunteered his office, the store mall.
Oh.
We may actually have to look at running a storage unit, right?
We're gonna get a, for one.
The bucket, you know, the household buckets, there's so many of them.
There's just two hundred five.
Yeah.
There's no place to.
No place to. They're pretty full.
It's, it's pretty full, yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
Nice discussion about the CRNR customer service center after both of this, and Lawrence and Dean let us know that they will, they're looking at hiring staff, additional staff to take care of calls and questions and problems, so, that was a good sign. We establish, or, the town hall meetings have been established, I think we've all gotten emails about the ones we're gonna attend, it's like, good.
I was looking at Facebook today, not that I do all the time, but, in there, there were some comments from residents of Temecula that CRNR services, and they're gonna go to the organics thing as well, but, but it's gonna increase their rate by two to, two dollars to two dollars and fifty cents per household, and, and Lawrence, I'm assuming that, that the residents were mistaken when they were saying in there that the methane gas that you convert to fuel for your trucks, they seem to think that, that they weren't gonna benefit from that. In other words, you know, it's my impression that, that you take that, you know, the savings of that fuel, we get credit for that, is that, is that right?
No, not credits.
Or offset.
Yeah, there, there is, it's, it's, that is gonna be consideration during the negotiation, it is reflected in our rates, but the, it won't, it's not gonna lower their rates, you know, not gonna see a lowering of rates. You know, the benefits, our position of benefit is, is the environmental benefit, you know, at least for us, you know, that goes towards our mission, protecting the environment, and having the, the natural gas in the vehicles emits less emissions, and it reduces greenhouse gases, and that's, that's for the reason, what we want for the, with the AD project.
I was under the impression we got more of a financial benefit out of, I don't know about you guys, you know.
On the, on the expense side and the cost side, there'd be less cost for CRNR's fuel, so there is, there is a net offset.
And that was reflected in our, in our rates.
When they gave, well, they, they, they included that figure into our, our. They gave us a net cost.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's reflected in, in the rate we negotiated with them.
They have a, they should address that down at Temecula, because we got, we got a problem down there with the residents thinking they're getting, taking advantage of.
CRNR gave us a write-up on the Temecula thing, that we can distribute if we want, that's the organic feeding, and their net cost was approximately two dollars a month. That is in the ballpark, we will charge the residents after we remove it. Someday we will have to charge.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
The residents that amount, but it'll be twenty twenty or twenty twenty-two or twenty-four, although we may start ramping, depending on what, what Wendy does, what she does.
Was that, was that our Facebook you saw the comments, or was that?
No. He gets it, he's a sister. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how, I didn't even sign up for it, it showed up. Facebook mysteriously has a way of cracking into your life. I got a, I got a question. Okay, so the rollout begins in June, right? And then when, how do the people know, as soon as they get their barrels, do they know that they can use that immediately for pickup?
Yes, there'll be, there'll be a flyer attached to, to the cart, everyone will have a flyer, how-to flyer, and it'll tell them the.
As soon as they get it, they can start using it.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Are we gonna do a press release, or something to let people know?
Oh, sure, we, we've got, we're, as we're getting closer to the town hall meetings, we're gonna, we'll probably mail out some old postcards and, and start advertising about the.
One of the things we talked about is the booth at the Fish Fry this year, since it's a week before, basically a week before.
So we're gonna.
It's gonna be, we're gonna have stuff all over the Fish Fry announcing it, including recyclable bins for stuff at the Fish Fry.
The other thing I have a question on is, do we have a list, say, in June, you get the rollout?
We have the math, the rollout.
It's about a two-month rollout.
Yeah, it was, it was in the newsletter as well, we've been posting that in the newsletter last couple of newsletters, it's the full, it's a full page in the newsletter, if I can get a copy of it here.
Oh, yeah, but, we did talk pretty extensively about the, you know, using the Fish Fry as an opportunity to, to educate the public, but also, Earth Day is coming up, are we, are we involved in Earth Day processes with Vanguard, or Orange Coast College, or anything like that, Benji's focus?
Yes, sir, we're actually participating tomorrow in a, with our Earth Day kind of community outreach with OCC Recycling Center and the Orange Coast College, we're actually have a booth there tomorrow between nine AM and one PM, and the district and CRNR has partnered up to, and we'll be sharing a booth.
This is at Orange Coast?
Yes, sir.
At the recycling facility?
No, in, in the campus.
Okay.
So it'll be there tomorrow.
Then the next, next opportunity is a community run, we have a booth at the community run, and by then, we should, I would, I would say by tomorrow, we should have a cart, you know, Sally's right up on the research processes, our organic delivery cart schedule, and a lot of information and to get people in to talk to us about, you know, this organics program, so, you know, new organics program on a banner, and the people will come, and if we just sit there, you know, with no notice, they may or may not stop by our booth, you know, just happen to go by and they may just pick up the stuff and keep on going, but, you know, I think this is a huge opportunity for us to take advantage of the educational opportunities, and that's the reason that we justified staff being at these events. So this, you know, this organic cart delivery schedule, blow it up, have it there, and people will come over and say, what the hell is this? And then, and then you'll get to talk to them, and you can talk to them about Sally's program, and you talk to them about our programs, and, and all kinds of things, but you need ways for them to, to ask you questions. So I would suggest you to take that thing and have somebody blow it up, and they'll say, what the hell is this?
That's actually a great idea, yeah.
Hopefully they will use that same.
Hopefully they will use that same vernacular. That's a good question. Boy, okay. How the air. When we're talking about the fish fry, you've only have come in the past on Saturdays, Sundays, I thought, are you gonna consider Friday also or not, just for more awareness? Just a thought, I, I don't know.
We're, we're, we're more open on Friday, we're gonna serve fish dinners on Friday.
So I, I just.
The booth will be.
The booth will be set ready to go and we have, it'll be designated already, but last year it was, oh, no one was there on Friday. So I'm just throwing that out there as a suggestion to consider.
Okay.
What are the hours on Friday? Five till five to nine.
And we can get staff a coupon and turn dollar off on a fifteen.
Once we get, well, you gotta, you gotta hand them out. You're awful loose with you.
Just a five, five.
I'm not sure what the tend to be, but, but at least we'll be there.
Sure.
Cause we gotta maximize, gotta maximize our use of the generators too. All right, um, salary survey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, at the last board meeting, um, we gave, the staff gave a, a report on the comparable agencies that, uh, our consultant will be contacting, surveying against for, um, salary surveys and, and benefits and, and I don't think I did a very good job explaining how that methodology worked, so I decided to bring this back to you in the study session and, and have Denise, uh, give you a, a better, do a better job than I did as, as explaining the methodology. We also have a conference call from our consultant who's calling from Berkeley who, um, drafted up the methodology, so, so he, he will also be available to, um, answer questions, so I'll turn it over to Denise.
Denise?
Yes, all right, so in a nutshell, I'm gonna explain the process and then I'll let Gayorg take over and fill in the blanks, but basically what COF did and what they do is they go out and look at all the different agencies in the area that relate to our type of business and there was twenty-eight of them and then they take all of those agencies and they rank them based on different factors of how they compare to the district. So some of the factors they look at are, um, the distance the agency is from our location, the number of employees they have, the budget they have, the type of services that they provide and so on. And then they take each of those factors and they rank all of those agencies and if it's, you know, to get ranked to number two, then they're obviously closer to a comparison agency for us than somebody that's ranked number twenty-eight. So then on each of those factors, they put them all together and then the top ranking agencies are the agencies that they recommend to be our comparison agencies because they're most like us. And so that's how, how they came up with the agencies that were presented in the report and there's twelve and, um, and one thing that happens though is this is only a mathematical process, so you're not looking at what was your goal of the comp study or, or what were, or what are the needs of the agency, so you might have to do a little bit of tweaking once you have those agencies. And so what we found, the top twelve ranked agencies included an agency that, that's outside of Orange County and what we really wanted to do was have Orange County agencies because that's our market. So Castaic Lake was included in one of those top twelve, so we just swapped out the next one below which was Huntington Beach to put Huntington Beach in the mix and so they're, they're about the same level of comparison as far as ranking goes and so that's how we came up with the twelve. But I'm gonna let Gayorg speak, can you hear me, Gayorg?
Yes, I can, have you?
We hear you just fine, Gayorg, thank you, thank you for being with us.
And maybe you can fill in the blank.
So, um, you know, I think you explained it very well, uh, you know, it's, it's quite a bit of analysis that goes into making our recommendations. We certainly place a lot of weight on the services provided because the number one goal, of course, in the comp study is to identify as many similar jobs at, at similar agencies as possible and so, of course, the services that are provided are important and then all the other factors sort of fall behind that, but in, you know, cumulatively, of course, they all together also carry significant weight, um, and, and the goal is that we would find a mix of agencies that represent you, the client agency, uh, where some may be, um, larger, some smaller, not a lot of agencies are, are, not too many agencies are much smaller than, than Costa Mesa, you know, because you are a smaller agency, but, um, we've got a couple of smaller agencies in the mix as well and it's not uncommon that we have a mix of cities and special districts. Um, again, you know, the, 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 you know, one of the, the other important, uh, factors we consider is, you know, what is your true labor market and, and the true labor market as we see it is really that, the geographic area, uh, that someone who's looking for a job may consider, uh, as they're looking, you know, how far is somebody realistically willing to commute? And so ideally, we would find a sufficient number of agencies within the immediate geography because that represents the true labor market, that, that, that those are the agencies that you're competing with over qualified talent, um, you know, those, that those agencies also represent cost of living which is a big factor in what we look at, uh, whether it's the, the overall cost of living, the, the average home price, the average household income, you know, all of those factors are, some are, are what we consider as well. So in, in the end, you know, I think we have a, a solid mix of agencies that, that barely represent the market.
Good. One, one quick clarification for, for either of you, um, in, in looking at the rankings, it'll say the district and then whenever you have a city, when we look at the city, we only took the public works department, it, it had to be a comparable service situation, right?
Yeah.
Uh, cause you could really skew that by including other parts of the city.
Mm-hmm.
So we just took the public works part, included it in our study, right?
Yeah.
That's exactly right, right, because otherwise you would, right, like you said, you would skew the compares and, you know, typically because the city obviously has many other services and that, that would, you know, sort of, that would skew the, the budget, the number of employee numbers and so, uh, yeah, that's absolutely right, that's why we try to narrow it down to public works, you know, even public works often include additional services, but that's, that's usually the best we can do just because, you know, the, the type of data that we're looking for, it's not easily broken down in smaller, even smaller increments, so we feel that public works is a, you know, is an appropriate representation of what we're looking for.
Did we, for the, you didn't indicate it on the report for the city of Costa Mesa? Did we only do public, it, it says city of Costa Mesa, doesn't delineate public works, do you know?
Could defer that to Gayorg.
Do you know, Gayorg?
You know, I would, I would imagine it would, but, um, you're right, since it's not specifically , uh, on the report here, I'd have to go back and double check.
Okay, but I, I think we, we probably would wanna know that just, yeah. Are we, you guys, you got a question?
Yeah, I just was wondering if we change financially if they're living in the city proximity or if they're out of the area?
Oh.
Or what they get salary-wise?
Oh, as far as employees, I'm not sure I understand.
Yeah. Yeah, as far as employees.
Yeah, so, so what we're trying to do is make sure our, a package of benefits and salaries are competitive with these agencies that we've identified and so, did I answer correctly?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I just, I couldn't find anything in the staff report that indicated that, uh, you know, we, um, give a certain amount for somebody who's.
I don't think they did.
No, they, you wouldn't pay any different for someone who.
That's what I wanna know.
Not on salary. If you lived in the city or out of the city, is that what you mean?
Yes.
Pay them separately? Yeah, I don't think. We, we could possibly pay moving expenses or that's what we've done in the past, but not, not for salaries.
They probably didn't say it right.
That's okay.
I knew, they knew what I meant.
No, I, I think, I think that's a good question because I think there are some agencies that, that do that.
There are, right.
You know, not to be picky, but, uh, I think I brought up at the last meeting, uh, an example of a district that was very, very similar to ours, Eastern Orange County Water District. They have the same, um, number of clients, twenty-one thou, or whatever it was, uh, and their budget was almost identical to ours and, uh, I don't know, I, I don't see it on here and, you know.
Gayorg, do we, this is Scott, Carol, do we, do we include East Orange, uh, Orange County Water District in the survey?
No.
Uh, we, did not, is that, is that, that's not Eastern municipal water district, right? Cause that's, that's obviously out.
That's Riverside.
No, it's, it's East, it's, it's East Orange County Wa, it's located in the city of Orange, it's, it's a special district and, and they're just, it's just for water service, they are considering going to sewers.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, right now it's just, it's just water, do you wanna, maybe we can take a look at that as well and, um, see if, if that would skew the, the list?
Sure, I, I could take a look at it, you were saying that, that they're just, they're just doing water, but right now they're trying to expand into wastewater?
Yes, yes.
Did you hear that, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, you've got other, you've got other agencies that just do those water, like, uh, Mesa Water District's in the list and that's all they do is water, so, which is fine because they, they, they maintain pipes like we do and so, e, e, even though it's water, um, there's still some similarities to wastewater, so that's, that's not a problem, it's, it's called East Orange County Water District.
Are they the ones?
I'm looking, uh, looking at it right now.
They did the presentation.
Okay, you know, I, I can certainly look at it, it's the one, uh, the one thought I would add to, to this is that while I would agree that, that, um, you know, if a, a water district such as Mesa Water District is, is essentially right next to you and it sounds like Eastern Orange, Eastern Orange County Water District is probably very close to you as well, you know, we, I would say that, yes, there are some similarities, but I probably wouldn't want too heavy a weight on water district comparisons, you know, because there are plenty of agencies that provide wastewater services, I think Mesa would make sense because it, it was so close, uh, in all the factors that we looked at, um, but, you know, I do find that it's some, sometimes it's a little, it's a little tricky to, to, to get the, the employees buy-in when it comes to, you know, hey, my, my job in wastewater is completely different than the job in water, you know, we do hear that very often and arguably, you know, you could say, well, there are pipes, there are transferable knowledge, skills and abilities and training, you know, that, that, um, somebody could most likely transfer between one or the other, but, um, you know, I, I would still, I, I would prefer focusing on wastewater services over water, but I'd be happy to look at that East, uh, Orange County.
Yeah, that'd be, just look at that East, that'd be fine, thank you.
Well, I'd, I'd like to echo Jim's, uh, comments, I, um, you know, I'd say a, a sixth of our staff travels, you know, seventy miles to get to work here, um, you know, so I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not sure I agree with your comments, uh, Mesa is, uh, five times our size, uh, and, and you still are able somehow to figure out how to make comparables. Um, I, I think the, Jim's agency is, is much more comparable than, than Mesa, the only thing Mesa has, um, that we can compare to probably is the general manager and the clerk and, and that's an unfair, that's an unfair comparison because their, their budget is ten times what ours is and, and, you know, it's not logical to me to what you're saying. Like, you know, I, I understand the lingo you're using, but I don't agree, Mr. President.
And you know, you do bring up a very good point in, in that when we compare small agencies to large agencies, uh, we, we typically find that, that at the rank and file level, you know, the technical level, the maintenance worker, the rank and file administrative types of positions like accountant or counting technician and administrative assistant and so forth, those we find are very comparable from one agency to the next, uh, regardless of the size, but when it comes to management, we do take that into consideration, so we do make some adjustments or compromises for the size, the sheer size of the organization. For example, uh, you know, it, it, since you mentioned, mentioned the general manager, we, you know, you could argue that, that the responsibility, but responsibilities of the general manager are very similar to that of city manager, you know, in terms of, of reporting to the governing body and having those, those CEO type of responsibilities and yet we do, of course, recognize that a city manager, uh, job is a little bit different from a general manager and so we wouldn't typically make that kind of match or that kind of comparison, so we, we try to find what are the, what are the, um, reasonable comparisons at each agency for management when the size of the agency is very different.
Uh, Mr. Mojer, you got a comment, go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't anticipate this discussion, so I didn't turn in the card, but I did have a comment. My name is Jim Mojer. Um, I think Director Berryman's suggestion is an excellent one, it makes great sense to me that that should be added to the list. When I look at the cities in the comparison with public works departments in the city I'm most familiar with, Newport Beach, I don't really see the comparability there. Public Works Department in Newport Beach is an engineering service, the only thing it's comparable to is what Rob does, the other jobs we have there are in different departments entirely, especially the field positions having to do with overseeing the trash program, maintenance of the sewers and so forth are in completely different department, which is called municipal operations. Formerly it was called general services and utilities and I suspect in other cities, public works may not be the thing that's comparable and of course the other functions we have, the staff and administrative things are in different departments, they're not in public works, so I, I just do not see the comparability of looking just at the public works department of Newport Beach, it does not make much sense to me.
Great, thank you. Okay, so where, where do we go now? Denise, Scott, what's the next step?
Well, uh, we will, I'll have, Gayorg will, will look at the, uh, East Orange County Water District and, and we'll have them look at Newport Beach as well and, um, uh, use that methodology, use the explaining and, um, and see where they, they lie, uh, we can definitely just, or just add them onto the list. Uh, we don't wanna go more than twelve, so, so we add East Orange County on there, we'll have to bump one of them off, so, uh, we'll have to look at that methodology and we're really curious.
And I know public works is the, is the common name, but maybe, and I'm sure Denise and Gayorg know that, that, that department may be called something else, so, uh, and public works has always been kind of the generic overlay, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't, you're right, and we would still, uh, let's say we're looking for a match for the accountant or administrative assistant, uh, they may have those types of positions in, in public works or utilities, but if they don't, we would still look, you know, we would look at, at, um, other areas in the city to identify matches because again, you know, whether an administrative assistant is assigned to public works or potentially another department, the body of work and the comparability of that work is usually still there to, to make that particular match.
That's good. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else, then we'll be hearing back.
Yep, yep.
Jim, thanks for joining us this morning, we appreciate it.
My pleasure, thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
Take care.
Okay. Um, the next report, Solid Waste Association of North America, I, I, I don't see any beignets on the table, I don't see any beaks around your neck, so, did you really go to New Orleans?
I did.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, under the board. Um, uh, the, uh, conference focused on, on three topics, uh, financial, social and system challenges and those three topics led through, uh, three interesting questions was, well, how do we pay for this as an industry, as North America looking at the trash issue, how do we, how do we pay for this, how do we effectively, effectively and efficiently run a zero waste program, well, what does that look like? Uh, that means different things to different municipalities, um, and how do you explain zero waste to managers and to community members, how do you get them excited to, 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 to partake on this new journey that, that industry leaders are trying to achieve? Um, in addition, the conference program also focused on extended producer responsibility, uh, EPR and offered an international perspective from industry leaders, something that Director Unis touched on, buying less, using less, reducing, not increasing, um, and that's also an issue that, that they're trying, that they're struggling with. Uh, and some of the overall messages was, uh, together we can, uh, make a difference, small changes in behaviors, uh, can have a huge impact on our planet, uh, the road to zero waste is not a destination, it's not a race, but rather a collective journey to make this planet a better place, reduce the amount of materials you use, which reduces the amount of waste you create, reuse materials when possible, recycle when possible and rethink the materials you use and those that you throw away. So those are kind of the overall, uh, messages and, uh, um, uh, the course, you know, are breaking out to Zero Waste to eight different courses, um, include financial challenges for different jurisdictions, they give examples of how, um, difficult that can, that may be, especially for those who are heavily, uh, right now the industry's heavy on the landfill side, so a lot of their, uh, fees are, are via tipping fees and those tipping fees fund HSW programs, fund administrative personnel, fund other programs, so if you minimize those tipping fees, you're reducing those programs, how do you offset that? How, how, who's gonna fund that? So that becomes a problem. Um, they talked about pay as you throw, case study from, uh, Worshipper Institute, which is, uh, some argue that's, it's a really good, uh, program, but then again, what, what, what we find out that it's offset by commercial. Some argue that's, it's a really good, uh, program, but then again, what, what, what we find out that it's offset by commercial rates. Uh, so that won't potentially impact us, if you, if we had both sewer, uh, if we had both, uh, commercial residential, then that's something. Potentially look at, uh, but that was a, the secret, it was that they're, they're offset by, um, uh, commercial, um, fees. And, and there's, uh, issues with, with that as well, cause, uh, obviously, the operation costs more. Than the, than the rates you're, you're incurring. Um, uh, they talked about the one bin system, mixed smurf, kind of like the system that we have, some of the pros and cons with it. Um, they, uh, they also had a panel to discuss zero waste and when is it worth it? When, when do we stop making it, um, a volunteer base and move it into more mandatory? The industry wants to say, hey, we tried volunteering and it hasn't worked. People are not, they're not doing what they're supposed to do. So, they want, they need laws to make them recycle and force them, um, uh, to, 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 to this new way of thinking. Some of the challenges there is from the federal government, there's no federal policy to, to, to mandate that, so it's, it's up to the states. Um, um, and right now, especially in the US, it's California. Everyone's looking at California. And of Calif, out of California, we're actually the leaders of the AD facility, so everyone's kind of looking at us. And they're looking at similar, um, uh, jurisdictions that are, that are, that are, that are moving the needle towards zero waste. And that's, that's what it's all about, but it's not, it's not definitive, it's, it's kind of, you know. M- moving towards that. When they actually talked about changing, um, the term of zero waste to the zero waste map. They wanna put all the jurisdictions on the map and say where do, where do each jurisdiction fit in. Um, so it's almost like a horizon timeline, and, and how do you get to the next step? Well, one agency could say, hey, well, the agency that's above us, we can talk to them and see what they did. So, they kind of wanna make it easier, cause it, it's kind of complicated, um, um, across North America. Um, they also have, again, social challenges, uh, some, um, people just don't wanna do it, or some people don't wanna participate. How do you change their behavior? Um, so there's some good ideas that we can use in our program, um, to, 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 um. To, uh, help them, motivate them. Some, um, jurisdictions are using kind of like a sticker program, like for example, in organics. Or once we roll over, roll out our organics, uh, program, um, we can do random, um, checks. Trash, we can look at a lid and if we see a bunch of organics, we can put a sticker, kind of great job, keep on doing what you're doing. And neighbors compete, oh, I have four stickers, oh, I have ten. I don't have none, well, that's cause you're not doing what you're supposed to do. There are contaminants there. So, there's a lot of good ideas that, 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 that we can draw on. Um, and then again, talking about the, uh, uh, extended producer responsibility, that, that's very hard, it's very political, there's a lot of money involved. Um, having note here that trash is a three hundred and fifty billion dollar industry in, in, in the United States. Uh, so how do you have, how do you, how do you convince producers to make less? It's, it's, it's very, so right now it's just more producing and profits, and so we're left with the trash. And, you know, it, it, it's up to us to figure out how to recycle that. Some of the idea, um, uh, examples they pointed to was, um. The, the little coffee, I forget the name, Keurig. The plastics recycle, but how do you get the coffee out of that? That, that's, you know, and even the owner is regretting that, that dimension.
There was a report, the guy that invented the Keurig is regretting the fact that he ever did it.
Right, right. Um, yeah, he's, even though he's a millionaire, he makes tons of money and it just, he, he's realizing the impact it's having on the environment. So, it's like, well, how, how do we get companies and individuals, entrepreneurs to, to think of the environment, think of trash? As part of their, that's very difficult to do, uh, unless we have like a federal government kind of campaign of zero waste. Um, uh, they had some, uh, also Pinckin County case study on lessons of the ecology store, how to sell zero waste. Um, uh, kind of like, they have a bulky item program where if you, if you drop something off, you're free to take something with you. If you see a lamp that someone else dropped off, so you can reuse it, uh, instead of just recycling it and. Right, right, and it's up to them, totally volunteer, uh, so it's kind of like an idea, um, that, that they do to try to, you know. Reuse the, the stuff and, um.
We could spend our extra budget on that, I'm sure they would take it.
We're paperless.
And again, and change, uh, the, the system challenges, shifting the paradigm from old way, from the old way to the new zero waste. Uh, again, uh, in, I touched on pictures here in, uh, New Orleans, they actually, uh, the only thing they recycle is cans and plastics. Everything else goes to landfill, glass, um, C and D, um, so they're still.
Pulling up the levees, they, they don't have landfill in New Orleans, they have levees.
Yeah, right, right. Uh, and then, as you see the pictures, they, they, they just have a lot of trash.
In the second picture, I hope you didn't wake the guy up.
Well, that's actually a homeless recycling program that they're struggling, I'm just kidding. Um, but, uh, yeah, they, they, so you can tell, they, they have cars that they're out there all the time, they have, uh, graffiti, uh, issues. And it's definitely a problem in New Orleans, and they, they definitely, uh, need help. And we did have, we had some professionals that.
I can already see Ed thinking about a transfer to New Orleans. You know, it's amazing, that very last picture I've here, that do not dump.
Right.
It says reported legal dumping, they've got a phone number, or call nine one one. Could you imagine calling nine one one in, in this city? And say, hey, my neighbor's dumping grease into it, I mean, holy smoke.
Yeah, yeah, it says, uh, violators will be prosecuted, fined and jailed. Not only would you be fined, you're gonna go to jail. So, I was, yeah, I was pretty shocked, but yeah, they, they have, uh, their challenges there, um. You know, they, they, they produce a lot of clams, they have a lot of shells, they have a recycling program where they actually take empty. And they actually put them back in the ocean, and they get more, uh, clams and it's just, it's just neat. Uh, but overall, I think there, there's a lot of stuff, there's, it was.
So, they don't recycle glass, but they recycle oyster shells.
Correct, just because.
They know their priorities down there.
Because it's such a huge market, so many, um, visitors, I think, uh, twice a year, they get, uh. Uh, they get a million visitors for about a month, uh, Mardi Gras being one, and I forget what the, what the other day it was, but, uh. There's a lot of oysters, people visiting and eating oysters.
First time to New Orleans?
Yes, yes, sir.
Quite a place.
Very different, yeah, people are different, it was, it was.
How much time did you spend down on Bourbon Street?
Uh, I. It, it was, it was, it was, it was neat. Uh, part of the tour, we did a, a, a tour on Thursday, um, and, uh. It, it, it was, it was neat, it was a lot of, you know, like music, a lot of people from different.
One thing that Swana does that I've noticed is, they, they offer a whole, I mean, when you look at the agenda for their conferences. Some of these organizations have, you know, one or two things. Swana seems to have like fifty thousand things you need. But Tand or Goji, they, I think they do a, a pretty good job, um. This is really an appropriate place to do a conference like this, I think. I mean, these pictures on here are amazing. I mean, that looks like, that looks like New Or, it looks like New Orleans, I mean, that's what you see when you go there.
Yeah.
So, I got one quick question for Javier.
Yes, sir.
Look at your pictures, does the trash truck pick up all of the bags also, or do they have someone manually throw them on there?
Uh, there's a manual, uh, they, they, they pick them up, um, manually, um. I think they have, uh, uh, like, like a rear order, a rear loader with, with a sidearm, um, so they can kind of pick it up and then.
So, there's a second person in the truck, does that?
I, I believe so, I wasn't, I wasn't clear, but I believe, it, it looks like that, so that's how they do it, they still do it the, the old, the old way. And you'd be surprised, a, a lot of, um, cities still in the US that still do, do the, the, the person jumps out and, and they do it, so automated. Some people are like, wow, they're trying to get it automated now. For me, I'm thinking, growing up in California, that's just so, that's how you think of your trash.
Those guys that pick up the trash, especially like in places, the big cities like New York, those are all union guys picking up trash. So, if you go to automation, you eliminate union jobs.
Right.
Which causes an issue for those jurisdictions, so.
That's, that's an excellent, excellent point. How do you go to, how do you go to zero waste? What does zero waste look like for New York? So.
Forget it.
Yeah, forget about it.
Oh, I can't say.
So, it's definitely, it, it was eye-opening, cause again, just, just having the California mindset. Made us see how much of a true leader we are, how ahead of the game we are in, in, in North America.
Leave it, Jim, Jim, I care, early, go ahead.
Thank you. Two comments. One, even, uh, above Monterey, and I don't remember where. But on the sanitary district, we went to a facility there, we were bused there. And it was all the things that people throw away and trash, and it was a huge place. It had loads of golfing stuff, it had loads of furniture, everything. And they were recycling it, in other words, you could buy it.
Re-source it.
Yeah, it was a really, really big store, that's one comment. So, that's just like what you're saying.
Right.
And the other thing is, um, I think in California, we will be frustrated for the simple reason. What you're saying, we're in a water drought supposedly, you know, I mean, we really are.
Sure.
And what's happening is, people are gonna buy more paper plates, more paper things that you.
Right.
Where, where you went to this conference, which I've been to that one before, and they're saying, don't buy all this paper stuff. Utilize, you know, your dishwasher and this and that. We're gonna be the opposite in California because of that, you know, and so.
These are always very easily, yeah.
Yeah, I could see in the cost of, just even when I was there last time, everybody's buying paper plates, paper napkin, paper dish, and so, anyway.
Oh, wow.
Just a comment.
Jim?
Um, you know, uh, I think that, uh, zero waste is gonna be different. For every community in every state.
Right.
You know, we, we have a whole different makeup than Louisiana or New Orleans and, and. And I think we're, I, I think our state is kind of heading in the right direction actually, but there's a line that you don't wanna cross, in my mind. And that is being punitive, being, uh, you go too far and try and police this thing. You know, all you can do is educate, 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 and, and then slap them on the wrist of maybe a little bit. But we can't be the, the big, big brother police state in any way, shape or form. And I, and I, I don't buy that at all, and, and you gotta be careful going too far with it.
Right, right.
In my opinion.
I think you're right.
Right, that, that's, that's an interesting point. Uh, one of the discussion was about keeping America a beautiful cab. And they talked about their mission statement, how they engage individual, they engage the community, um, and they kind of do it as a kind of, like, they take a leadership method. By encouraging, uh, participation and giving, and, 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 you know, telling, hey, great job, thank you for doing this. Um, doing, um, like an award, reward system where, you know, one street or, 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 or. One side of, of a city would compete against another side, uh, kind of like a friendly competition, kind of here, like east versus west. Who would, you know, uh, put more of organics in their cart, and then recognizing them with an award or a community, uh, dinner. So, there's different ways to kind of.
Mary Poppins syndrome.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, kind of very happy.
Full of sugar.
Right, right, but I agree, y- you don't wanna, yeah, you don't wanna cross that line. But a lot of industry leaders are saying that they need tougher laws to, to go away from a volunteer, making the tariffs for. Taking it from a voluntary and, and making it more of a mandatory, it's such a problem.
New Orleans, they, they need some help, it looks to be like, I mean, you know, they got a ways to go before they even approach our level, you know.
Right.
So, yeah. But, you know, I think we're farther down the pipe than, than they are.
It really seems like it doesn't, I mean, we talk to these people in other states and stuff, they're really, I mean, they have, I guess. They have the ability to go put this stuff somewhere, or barge it away, like in New York where they barge it to the pubs or wherever they take their cash. But they're, they're, they're gonna be missing a boat.
So, very informative, uh, it, it, it definitely opened up my mind that, uh, a lot of environmental engineers. Again, still, the industry's still very landfill heavy, a lot of the booze are, you know, how to, you know, get more energy out of your landfills. How to, how to minimize, um, leakage, um, um, how to squeeze more into your landfills. Using technology, and so, so it's amazing, so it'd be nice to see in the future if we, if Swana goes to more of the AD and more vendors of, hey. We, we, you know, work up with that, you know, manufacturers AD parts, buy from us. So, it'd be nice to see that, but right now. Obviously ninety percent landfill heavy land, it's still landfill and trying, trying to get at, so. Anyhow, I couldn't go on further, but great conference, uh, took a lot of great announcements, and definitely share more detail with the general managers, thank you.
I, I hope that the sticker on the trash gate isn't like the ones there in front of the truck, I mean, that's a different kind of picture.
Right.
Thank you, Javier.
You're welcome.
Uh, number seven, hazardous waste collection.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, it's, uh, I thought, staff thought it was a good idea to give more an overview of this program. So, um, I have Elizabeth Pham is gonna be giving this report.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Mr. President, for the board members and God. I'll be talking about the door-to-door household hazardous waste collection program we have. This program's offered for free for our residents who are sixty-two years of age or older, and mobile or certified disabled individuals. Um, and this is kind of to assist them in disposing their HHW waste. Um, and I'll just talk about the steps for the program. First, the residents contact district or CRNR to schedule a pickup. The RNR will then verify the quantity and type of HHW materials. Um, and at this point, verification of age and physical status is not being, um, checked. Uh, it's just based on the honor system, um, and residents aren't asked to provide any documentation whatsoever. The RNR will then coordinate the pickup time and provide additional information on storage and packaging the HHW materials. On the collection day, the district residents will place the bags and containers at the front of the house at seven AM. And they don't need to be home for this to be picked up. Um, the RNR will then pick up the items, and at the end of each month, they will bill us for ninety-eight dollars per pickup. For the current fiscal year, um, we've only had thirty HHW pickups. Um, we promote this program on our website, newsletters, social media, and through the Co-To-Make the Recreation Guide. Javier has also presented this program to the senior centers and, uh, at the Kumani Club. Um, non-eligible residents can take their materials to the HHW facility, which the nearest one is located in Honeybee Beach. Um, we don't anticipate on needing more funds for this program, since we've only, we've budgeted thirty-five thousand. And we've only spent two thousand nine hundred and forty. But we will continue to monitor the program, and I've attached in this report the flyer that we use to market this program.
It's a really good flyer, I mean, um, I can't wait till I'm sixty-two.
Elizabeth, when we first started this program, a number of years ago, we didn't have a limit on the age. And I was curious if we have the documents that, that, how much we spent on it when we had it open to everybody in the city.
Yeah, I would defer to Javier for that.
I mean, I don't, you have those documents handy, but why not consider opening it up to the whole, the whole city instead of just a six?
Similar to slap program, first come, first used.
Yeah, and see how it goes for a year.
Let, let me ask you, in addition to what I was saying, is it, is our policy that they have to be sixty-two years old, or is that staff's? Determination, is that staff's policy?
Uh, well, actually, I, I don't recall ever seeing it, to open up to everyone, we, we figured we wanted to limit it, I, I think.
My question was, is it district policy, the sixty-two years district policy? Or is it staff's determination that that should be what the program is? What, what does the policy say?
Um, I'll have to, uh, double check, but the policy may stay senior citizens, and the justification for senior citizens is age sixty-two.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do is see the policy.
Well, there is no.
I mean, I should be able to look it up.
There's no written policy of a program that was pre, prepared to the board and the board approved the program. Here's the criteria we, we set up, and the board said, okay, proceed.
It's not, it's not, you know, operations code is not a, a write-up, is it?
Maybe Rockton expanded that.
Well, your comment, when it was open to everybody, it was abused, and it was just built back to reduce costs. And be more effective, it would just be limited to senior citizens. So, if you open it back up, uh, yes, you may spend your money, and statistics will go up. However, the cost will go up, so, it was just a trade-off.
And already you get a comment.
Yeah, uh, the comment was, um, I don't see anywhere where it tells you the number of items that you're allowed to have per site. That's important.
I, I think I had that question too, is, you know, if you've got thirty-five cans of paint, are they gonna take thirty-five cans of paint?
I think that's really, it depends on CRNR, once you call and, if they do ask that you optimize. I think that's really, it depends on CRNR, once you call and, if they do ask that you itemize them, kind of detail everything that you would like to get picked up with them, then they will determine what's limited.
Really?
But I'd like to add that for all of our non-eligible residents, we do have the annual, or semi-annual, the, um, HHW pickup event that we have, we'll be having that in November. Um, and now that, because it's offset from a grant, I feel like we can offer it more often. Um, and so, you know, if we do decide to change the program, that's.
Yeah, I always assumed this was more of a convenience for disabled and seniors, I didn't really look at it as a big collection, 'cause I, having gone to the, the, the collection thing over at North Coast College, that was, I mean, there were, I was absolutely amazed at how many people could manage that, so, whatever.
When we first started the program, we didn't have CRNR run the program, we had a different vendor, which cost us a lot more.
Yeah.
And this price is a lot less than, and I think it's reasonable to consider, for consideration, of possibly opening it up to anybody, so. Maybe at some point, we could put that under discussion for, to consider, and maybe look at, and like Bob says, maybe when we're going through the policies, we can look to see if that's written as a policy.
Well, I think it's part of that, we need to bring CRNR into the, into the discussion next too, I don't, I'd hate to.
Well, they would love the business.
But you know.
I would think they would.
But you know, I still think that they need to itemize, not just leave it up for the, because I put them out before, I put way too much. And they said only fifteen is allowed, so I had to go and take mine.
So, so what we should do is have a policy that says what it is. The mission statement of the district is protecting our community's health and environment, like providing solid base to our, and to our collection services. Um, you know, I don't see anything in there that limits sixty-two years old, uh.
Well, there's others, you know, when we first did, at the other companies, did have a limit, it was like ten items, or it was a smaller, a number, so that would be good to identify, yeah, we have to identify it.
Yeah, my question is, would we have it like how we offer the multi-item pickup, which we have limits, like ten items, but three pickups per year? If we were to revise it?
That could suggest some alternatives.
Yeah.
I mean, what, what, what is the history, you know, and if we have one person that has thirty items and they have everyone else? Or does CRNR tell them what the limit is, and, and, and we don't have a limit in our policy? You know, and, and we need to cut that.
I, I believe, I believe we, we did, I will have looked at our files, and I think we did do a, a presentation to the board, considering going community-wide, you know, I mean, we, to them not via caduceus, too costly. Uh, but I, I could be wrong, but I, I'm pretty sure we presented this to, to the board.
We should, we should also be presented with budgeted, and if we're spending ten percent of what we budgeted, if we told the public, was that a budget? Ten times more.
Okay, I'll do a financial analysis, since we've been separated from the city.
You want us, just put this on, I'll come in.
One, one more comment.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I did another more thing about the, the, uh, we don't have it listed on our, uh, flyer, but I do recall, uh, on our contract, and it is per the vehicle code, um, that we are limited to a hundred and fifty pounds of HHW material legally, that CRNR's able to pick up in a vehicle and move it safely, um, with, with state regulations. So if that's one item, or it's ten items, it, it cannot exceed the hundred and fifty pounds, so it depends on, on the material it is, 'cause there is a limit on weight. Um, and it is referenced in, in the, in the contract, and we could definitely, we could definitely mention that.
Yeah, we'll bring CRNR, and what their regulations are.
Yeah.
FedEx, FedEx, because there are no limits.
No, you can't, yeah.
You have to have.
H, 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 W?
FedEx, my H, W.
Oh, FedEx, my H, W, yeah. It's funny, well, I don't know.
I'm sure Mike, Mike, he's got, he's really rather just coming to my house. But I think this is a good.
Yeah, we're getting it wrong.
Yeah.
Just looking at the money that we've spent and what we have available.
So, so that shows that, you know, obviously, they're not taking advantage of the program. Um, it's not like we're having a problem, that's one of the reasons we're so lax on the honor system. If they told us they were sixty-two, we said, sure, okay, fine, we'll schedule the pickup, and that proves that they're not.
Yeah, I agree, I, I was surprised it's so low.
It's not, not eating your kid line, right.
I would've thought they're, although, most sixty-two-year-olds probably don't have, aren't doing their painting, they're probably painting some of the paint, but they do have, but, I mean, the cleaning chemicals just alone. I know when my father-in-law passed away, the stuff he had in his garage, unbelievable, I mean, he must've bought every.
And we've had extended, uh, we have, we've had the program to those who have passed, we have phone calls from, um, daughters or sons of, 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 of residents that said, hey, my, my, mother, my father lived in Coast to Make, they just passed, and they have tons of stuff, can, can you pick it up? I definitely tell them, yeah, I like CRNR, hey, you know what?
Yeah.
Go ahead and extend the HHW pickup, and even then, the, the number is still low.
I, I think that's a good public relations thing for all of us. Okay, then we'll bring this back, and, yeah, for discussion, bye. All right, Wendy, your favorite subject, are you presenting this, Scott?
Yes, yes.
I'm sensing some animosity towards finance this morning.
No, none, none whatsoever, just no animosity.
I, I've had, you haven't yet, but.
He, he did.
I only have one thing to talk about in the morning, is de-cap.
Okay, before you, is the, um, sewer lateral assistance program review, uh, um, staff report? We brought this back to you to review the progress over the past, um, nine months, and what we like as some direction for the upcoming fiscal year, and probably actually two fiscal years, since we're adopting a budget program for two fiscal years. Um, I wanted to let you know that as of, um, the end of March, we've accepted a hundred and seventy-five applications, new applications. We budgeted two hundred thousand dollars, of that two hundred thousand dollars, that's one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars each, that's a hundred and sixty. So we've already accepted more applications than we were budgeted for. And I was able to do that because we carried over sixty-five thousand dollars from the prior year, which was about forty-one applications. And then some of those people didn't follow through with their, um, completing the process. At six months, we give them another month, we notify them by mail, and we give them another month to contact us, and then we'll extend it if they do contact us. And so when they don't contact us after that time period, we reallocate the money. So this is a very labor-intensive tracking program, that we're constantly rolling over and tracking and trying to project. We have approximately, I think, um, forty, no, thirty-six, as of March thirty-first, thirty-six more slap, um, available, slots available, but that could be increased if people, you know, are reimbursed less. Out of the hundred and seventy, or out of the hundred, um, twenty-six applications we've taken in, it's averaging about eleven hundred dollars per application. So it's a little less that they're being reimbursed with people that don't, you know, that did a video and didn't have any problem and didn't need it. So, the bottom line here is, let's just go to the bottom line. The bottom line is, two hundred thousand dollars is not going to be enough to sustain this in the next year. Our options are, we increase the budget, we decrease the reimbursement amount, or we change the program entirely. Staff is recommending to change the program entirely and go to a more preventative. What we see with the existing staff, um, interactions with the plumbers and the people that come in is, they really, they're not finding out about the program until they've got a problem. The plumber comes out, so the plumber is telling them, but he's doing the work at the same time, and so the plumber's in here, the homeowner's in here, and it's very adversarial for staff. It's not a pleasant interaction, we have very few people that are actually following the guidelines of, you know, being proactive about having their video done, and, you know, and usually when we see people that have their videos done and have, only get reimbursed with a video, that was because the problem was really in the house, and not in the lateral. And so we're saying, hey, it's clean, and they're saying, hey, everything's backing up, and we're saying, but it's not in the lateral. So, that's generally what we see, so it's, it's very difficult. The plumbers are, you know, they wanna get the work done quickly, and we understand that, so, you know, then they have the homeowner call and beg us, you know, well, I didn't know, and he didn't tell me, so we have a lot of that going on, it's, it's difficult for staff to deal with. What we're recommending is to make it more proactive, is that we go on to a videoing program, where everyone could have their lateral video. So they kinda know what situation they're looking at, and we'll review it. It would be no cost out of the homeowner's pocket. The homeowner would fill out the form, we can include it in our newsletters and put it online, there's a lot of different ways to just give them the form. They call one of the plumbers, we have the plumbers come in like we do now with the training, and if they, you know, agree to do it for the set amount, you know, whether it's through the roof or through a cleanout, then they're on the program, we'll consider them a list. They come out, they lateral and video the, or sewer, video the sewer line, and they bring the application, their invoice, and the DVD to us. We call the homeowners, and we say, this is what we saw, get three quotes, you know, we've got a lot more options, and then the homeowner can plan. You know, we're seeing a lot of tree roots in there, but you, you're still pretty wide open, but you're gonna have to do something sooner or later. Get three quotes, what you're probably gonna want is some hydrojetting, you know, do, if you didn't have a cleanout, we saw that we paid the upper rate. You wanna have a cleanout put in, that will facilitate doing this. We'll have a lot of more options to give the people options, you know, because they're not already having the plumber out there telling them, this is what you gotta do, this is what you gotta do, this is what you gotta do. And so staff is recommending that this program would, um, save finance, because we set up a new vendor, every homeowner that applies ends up being a vendor in our system. So as you saw, we had, you know, like a hundred and twenty-six vendors just for this year already. Um, it's just, it's a suggestion, um, I know you've probably heard this suggestion before over the last couple of years as options, but we've, bottom line is, we've got to do something, either lower the amount, or we're going to have to cut off the program sooner, and I know that the board has not been amenable to having to end the bro, program before the end of the fiscal year. So, right now, I'm looking at the way it's going with about averaging twenty applications a month, is we won't make it all the way through June, unless, you know, some of the people expire their applications and we are able to roll over, so.
Um, good job, Wendy, um, if I could just add on to this, I think what, what we're recommending is, is what we believe is really a true preventative maintenance program. And, and I think, and I believe that's what the board was intended for this program, to be the preventative maintenance program. But what also what we like about this program is that what we're seeing a lot is these plumbers taking advantage of other residents. We're seeing bills coming to eight, ten thousand dollars, and, and a lot of times, it's, it's not necessary. This program would, would prevent that. This program, we can actually set up, look, here's what we see, yeah, you need some work, here's what we suggest you to do, now go get three quotes and get the best price.
The only, the only problem I have with that, part of it, I, 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 I'm kinda agreeing a lot with Wendy with what you're saying, that being a preventative maintenance thing, but, gotta remember what I do for a living, and when we do preventative maintenance and we make recommendations, I don't wanna get into a situation where we recommend something, it gets screwed up, and then we're on the hook for it liability-wise.
We can, we can have them sign something, we can have them, like, uh, we can go with Al and have him, okay, here's a recommendation, is they sign off on that, they don't hold responsible for performance action.
Those are still gonna get sued, but that's a better step.
Right.
I think our.
Yeah, a question, um, when they, the plumber gets the okay from the person, the housekeeper, and they come to you, they have to come to you first to get a permit, before they can start in.
No.
That's what I was told.
Well, you're talking about our existing SLAP, under this new program, what the, the homeowner would fill out the application, pick one of the firms, call them, the firm would come out, video, and then the, the plumber, the firm, would bring the video, the application, and their invoice to us. And we would pay the plumber, review the invoice, and contact the homeowner. So it's less burden on the homeowner and more proactive. And we decided that it would be, we talked to Steve, and he said, you know, with roots, they can come back a lot quicker. So we said, instead of allowing every five years, we could do every three years, so you could kind of see, you know, where your changes are. And it would allow, you know, a lot more participation.
Okay, but right now, say, SLAP program the way it is, they have to come in here and get a permit.
Yes, they do.
Now, do we pay for that permit, or do they pay for the permit?
We waive the fees, we have no idea if they end up charging the homeowner for the, the permit fees anyway, they'll tell.
Some do. So, I, I think the majority, I, 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 ironically, I had a customer in my office last night that had just gone through this. And I, they knew about our SLAP program, but the plumber exerted so much pressure to get this, if you don't get this done now, we have to go.
I don't know when I'm gonna be back.
If, if we have to go through this bureaucracy with the sanitary district, you're gonna have an issue, and so, my customer went ahead and let him do the work.
Uh huh.
You know, I think that happens way more than we know.
Yeah, well, see, right now, I'm going through it, and so, you know, uh.
Your whole neighborhood is, or something.
Yeah.
Well, no, we're getting sidewalk, so I'm trying to get a tree out.
Good luck.
Well, I will. Anyway, um.
It's your tree, you know, that's not.
No, it isn't, it's, it isn't, it's the city tree, and the lateral, yeah. But what I'm getting at is that, uh, when you would pay half of what he charges me, you know, whatever, like, two thousand.
Up to.
You ch, twelve hundred.
And fifty, yeah, up to, yeah. Yeah, and then we waive the fees, but again, one of the problems I have when I review these things, you know, and I'm way down the line, you know? I'm getting the invoice, and I'm looking at the invoice, and you've all had plumbing permits and contractors, they've got quote sheets, they fill them out, they're in CR, they're, you're getting the third copy, they're hard to read.
I know.
And they were options on them, and so they're just saying, they paid this amount, we don't require proof of payment. So sometimes I can't determine, you know, how much the homeowner actually paid for the service, because they just turned in this sheet that says, you know, this is what they were gonna do. And I, I don't like that, you know, but I think the extraordinary step of saying, prove to me how much you paid, let me see your credit card, let me see your cancelled check.
Yeah.
That would just kill the program right there. So, you know, there's kinda that happy balance where you're, you know, but we have no, we have no idea, you know?
It's so hard to read it, and what they say.
Yeah, she's got a perfect example.
I didn't even know they had in CR anymore. Bob and then Elizabeth.
Well, the plumbers, the plumbers live behind the curb.
No, they're all like that, honestly, they all are like this.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's hard to say it.
Prevent plumbers from riding roots from sewer laterals into the main line. Um, you know, I, you know, I, I applaud your thinking about changing the program. I, I, in the transition though, we, we've set the community up, there's a thousand people out there that are taking, uh, use this process, there's thousands more of this program than ever, we only have fifteen thousand homes. I, I think it would double the cost, I think that you owe the community of residents and plumbers that we've trained to do this program, you know, a, a method of phasing it out. Um, you know, and that'll cost in, uh, a section of a couple hundred thousand dollars, because everybody out there that's stuck, their neighbors, had the ability to take advantage of this program, then we will have to be explaining to them why we're doing it. I'm, I'm for, um, thinking about staff providing, uh, the method of transitioning to this new program, but in the meantime, budgeting to pay, you know, a thousand dollars instead of twelve hundred and fifty, which will extend the number of customers we can do. Coast to Make is a tree city, it's horrible. Um, you know, trying to get rid of a tree in your parkway is abysmally difficult. You, you may win once in a while. Every application is, that I've seen in the past year, rarely do they not deny it, the other is, is through the public.
I, I, I was, I sat on that Parks and Recreation Commission, and we had hundreds of requests to remove trees, and they all made perfect sense, but there was always somebody on that commission who, you know, we had one guy that wanted to move his driveway over to the other side of his property. If he did that, his tree was gonna be in the middle. We had people on that parks commission that said, well, they could just drive their car around that tree, we're not taking that tree out. That's the mentality we deal with, he's right, his trees are.
Sacred.
Sacred, you know?
But, but I think, I, my recommendation would be to reduce the funding and then begin to think through how to make the transition. I, I don't have a clue yet, I was, I thought you did a good explanation, but I don't have a clue how we get out ahead of this problem, unless we go and, uh, video fifteen thousand, uh, laterals.
Okay, could we do a twofold, that's an excellent suggestion, how about we reduce a hundred thousand towards the, or something less, because, you know, at three or four hundred dollars or six hundred, a video?
I, I say stick with two hundred thousand, because that's how many applications you're gonna get next year, I mean, that's the historical.
And I won't be able to make the, the whole year, so you're saying reduce it to a thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Um, then how do we start up the videoing, because I need less money in the, I don't have more money in trash overall, I have to use that same hundred thousand to.
Let me know. Well, well, how. Yeah. Explain it to, uh, what you need, to do a pilot program, and, you know, where you're headed.
Okay. How about? Okay, um, the newspaper article is just about to come out. We could start publicizing the new program. How about if I drop the, the sewer, um, assistance program down to a hundred and fifty thousand, at a thousand dollars a pop, first come, first served, and use fifty thousand to go towards the new lateral for the first year?
What are you going to use that fifty thousand for? You haven't explained it to me yet.
To reimburse the plumbers for videoing. It'll be four hundred or six hundred dollars for the video.
But you haven't explained to me how they're going to, um, implement this program. The only time that we get calls is when they've got a problem.
So we're.
How do you get ahead of that?
We're going to advertise it in the newspapers.
Yeah.
We can do, um, community outreach. We can do tons of advertising. But all we have to do is tell the plumbers, and the plumbers are going to say, I can fill every minute with videotaping every homeowner's.
It's more work for them. I mean, I think the key is to the plumber. The plumbers will do our work for us.
I think so too, because it's not going to stop them from doing the job while they're out at a job and come here. They're going to say, hey, we're participating with the Costa Mesa Sanitary District on this videoing.
Yeah, my recommendation is, it's two hundred thousand dollars for the existing program, and then some additional for, um, however you're going to transition to this new program. Given, you know, it's a pilot program. It should be a pilot program, not a hundred, not a hundred percent effective immediately. The education you're going to do will take years. I mean, we've gotten to this state since two thousand and seven. You're not going to immediately change the program. I think, I, I, I appreciate where you potentially are heading, but I don't think staff knows yet how to do this. And I'd like to complain to me yet how to do that.
I, I, if, if, if you can do it, Director, saying that's fine, but you made a comment that we don't have enough money to make until June now. So what do, do we need to, how do we correct that?
We're going to stop the program as soon as we run out of slots.
Which is what we've done.
Right. Well, last year, we re-appropriated additional money and then carried over the remaining.
Which we still have the option of doing. We just got to, if you get creative and figure out where to get the money.
Exactly.
So one of two things, we stop it like we've done before, or we reallocate.
I'm, you know, I'm, we watched it, and, you know, the spreadsheet is huge, you know? It's, and every single person that touches it is looking at, you know, how many people. Tammy is checking to make sure expirations are followed up on. So I'm hoping that either need will slow down a little, or that we'll be able to, um, reallocate some people that haven't finished out the program, and then we'll carry those people over into the new year, and we might have the same scenario this year, but.
We created a bigger-headed monster.
Yeah, it's, it's an expensive program.
We created exactly what we had intended to do, and that is, is to get the homeowner to fix those sewer laterals so that the plumber doesn't rod those roots into the mainline and cause S S O. And that's, to the extent, to that extent, it's been very effective. We rarely have, um, sewer, sanitary sewer now from pushed-in roots. And it's because of this program.
Rob, you have.
It's expensive, but.
Yes, I did, I believe, but I'd like to wait until Elizabeth gets her shot.
Yes, I did know.
Okay, excellent. Um, I'd like to say, just a way to make the homeowner accountable and the plumber accountable. I have seen that, yes, it is a first-come, first-served, and now that we have to end it sooner than we anticipated. A lot of these plumbers are taking advantage of it, and it's disadvantage for these other residents. They're coming in, one particular plumber is saying that every single property he has is emergency, and he needs it done right away, right away. And so he takes away the thoughts from other residents who would like to be proactive, but can't, you know? And, and I also think that, yeah, it's a change, but like the organic recycling programs, you know, we, we, we went from a one-tank system, and now we're asking our residents to go to organic things. It's going to take a lot of education and a lot of communication, but I think it's possible.
I'm, I'm, I'm very supportive of that, but not at, you know, we just go, okay, let's do it fifty percent less next year. Because you're not going to be able to do that.
Yeah, I agree.
Without irritating a lot of, you know, Arlene's in.
I should have done that on a sixteen-hundred.
Each time we reduce the funds, they get, they get mad at us. So we're, we know it's inevitable. We can't please everyone.
I can hear the fun. It's not my fault. It's Sam's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Rob.
A couple of interesting things. First of all, the average, back when the program started, and the reimbursable was eighteen hundred, was also eleven hundred.
Yeah.
So Wendy's reporting now that the average is eleven hundred. When the reimbursable allowed is twelve fifty, it was eleven hundred back then too. So it appears that the average has always been eleven hundred. So there's some data that you could depend on that. With regard to how to get out ahead of the program, Director Uden's correct. No one's going to make a phone call until they have a problem. Nobody's going to work on their sewer laterals, even if it's a program where you get reimbursed if they don't have to. They're going to wait until they have a problem, and then they're going to get active. You always have the problem of whether or not it's emergencies. The best thing that the sanitary district can do for the residents in the community is to counsel them on what they do and don't need. Meaning that to look at the videotape and to tell them what they do need and what they don't need, and give them some idea of costs so that they're an informed resident making a decision. And if you go down to possibly only reimbursing the amount of the video, the video, Wendy said four to six hundred. It used to be three fifty to four hundred. Say five hundred. Well, uh, maybe three fifty, four hundred, the, the, the plumbers may try, may have an easier time getting around the sanitary district if it's only, the reimbursable's only three fifty, four hundred, because they may say, you're going to have to wait all that time for them to look at that. I'll just give that to you for free. Like they're doing now, because they know there's going to be more in the backend. So the best thing you can do for the residents is figure out how to have them discuss with us what their problems are before they get it fixed. So that's where we can provide the best service.
Okay, um, suggested, maybe we have a meeting to talk about this, this, this is becoming a really big thing for, I mean, I'll be over the years. It becomes such a huge thing for the district, that maybe we ought to have a separate meeting to talk about just the slap program. Does that, does that make any sense?
Sure.
Wendy, what do you think?
Um, yeah, of course, you know, whatever the board directs. That's, that's my, you know.
That's why I want you to tell me.
Yeah, we're running out of time, and we've already got some special meetings scheduled for the budget, and then, you know, we'll have a meeting for the, all the salary information, so we'll be spinning the budget, you know, after that.
What we need to do is have a meeting, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Arv, but, um, as we transition this program, and if we're going to evolve it into something else, we need to sit down and talk about that more specifically, more than what your concerns are. Now, I mean, right now, you're on a track to stop this program soon.
In June.
Yeah, um, I, I think we have to, personally, I think we just have to continue on that road. But I think we need to start talking about what the next generation of the slap program's going to be af- after this budget, after you've already done this budget.
So would it be acceptable to the board if we continue the program at a thousand dollars in the new year, um, waive the fees, two hundred thousand dollars, we stop when we're out of money, and then I will find money for the pilot program and bring that back to the board, either in the budget process, or we'll bring it back later.
Yeah, I, if it's eleven hundred, I think.
My comment would be like eleven hundred, like the average cost. That would be, make more sense to me.
I know, but Bob recommended a thousand.
A thousand, a thousand is two hundred thousand. I can do, I can probably cover the number of applications that we will probably end up with. I'm estimating that we will have about two hundred thousand applications this year that we actually pay for.
When would that start, that thousand dollars?
It would start July first. So it would be a thousand dollars, not eleven hundred, and so then I could cover the now, number of applications I anticipate having. Eleven hundred, we would.
Yeah, I would, I would go for that, meaning when you discuss it, if the board. Yeah, we're not going to discuss it next week, right?
Yeah, I'll have to bring back a staff report to the board.
I think you already started.
So my direction is two hundred thousand dollars, a thousand dollars reimbursement, and we'll deal with the pilot program in the budget process.
Yeah.
I think that works.
And it wouldn't start till July?
Right, yes.
And if we run out of money this year, we'll stop the program.
Yours, yours we're going to, you better get yours in quickly, because we're going to.
No, I didn't make that, I didn't make a motion that we just, staff has the authority to stop the program.
That's what we've, that's what we've been doing when we run out of money.
We have many, we have many motions. We're just talking about bringing it to the board's attention on the board meeting.
Yeah. Okay, Rob, yes?
I just, last thing, to add to Director Uden's comments about, yes, they're pushed in roots, but one of the other goals of the program is to decrease private sanitary sewer overflows. There's quite a volume of private wastewater that makes its way into the ocean along with the public wastewater. And it does help if they're educated on that. They would be more educated on our other programs and why we're spending all the money we do on sewers, so there are some educational benefits.
Okay, can we take like a, so we're going to want to take like a minute break? Or is it just the older blood or something? Or maybe, let's make it funny.
You better go first.
No, I'm fine.
Take your microphone before you.
Yeah, yeah. Just like a five-minute break.
Wendy?
Yes.
You see where you're going to spill.
A lot of that much force to it.
No.
How do you say seven hundred fifty dollars? Are you enjoying it okay?
No, I went there. Well, I like that you're thinking about.
For you to think about.
We're late, we're late.
What kind of about the alley that?
We'll have, as far as the Urbain Pump Station, or which one is that about?
You're fine.
Yeah, well, we're going to have a closed session next year. What's that?
Some are, okay, some are not.
Is that?
Yeah, the plumbers and the residents.
But we'll.
Yeah. She, she has a little child, she wanted a little boy.
Have you ever listened to Mike Dine, the commercials on the radio?
Yeah, yeah.
First, they started with ninety-nine dollars, and they talk about their ethics. And their ethics.
I like that they come and do it and leave. My favorite thing.
Studying representing the Lakers three months.
Lakers. No, I think I like Lakers. They're cool, but I'm not, I'm not exactly.